Welcome to the February 7th Troy City Council meeting. And could I remind you, if you have a cellphone or electronic device that you turn it off completely, it interferes with our sound system even if it's on vibrate. So, we ask that you turn those all off. This evening, we're pleased to have with us pastors Stephen Husava from the Northfield Hills Baptist Church, who will give us the invocation, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise, pastor.
Let us bow our heads as we come before Almighty God and Creator. Our gracious Father in heaven, we come before you with thanksgiving, and we do ask that you teach us humility. Humility to recognize our need of you and your guidance. You have blessed Troy as a city, as a city on a hill, which, who has a light that cannot be hidden. It's been a blessing to Michigan and beyond, Lord Father, and its righteousness with exalt, with, which exalts a nation and will exalt Troy, Lord. We ask for the wisdom that can only come from above, for the mayor, for the city council, and for the people of Troy, that as we work together, that truly all that is said and done within these walls tonight will bring glory and honor to your holy name, and it's in your son's name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, pastor. It's always nice to see you. May we have the roll call, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schilling?
Here.
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Here.
Fleming?
Here.
Howrleck?
Here.
Kerwin?
Here.
McGuinness?
Here.
Slater?
Here.
Form present. This evening, we begin with two items of presentation, and I'm going to go down to the front to, for the first one. And is Ann Kamisky here? I believe she's the one accepting.
Yes, thank you. She probably didn't see me because I'm so short.
How are you?
I'm well. How are you?
Okay, good. Now, this is a proclamation that we do each year, and this is the proclamation for the National Children's Alcoholics Week, and this is February 13th to the 19th in 2011. Whereas, it's estimated that one in four children in the United States under age 18 is hurt by family alcohol abuse or alcoholism, and that countless others are affected by parental drug use. And whereas, there is strong scientific evidence that alcoholism runs in families, with children of alcoholics being two to four times more likely to develop alcoholism than children of non-alcoholics. And whereas, parental alcohol abuse is a significant factor in large portion of child abuse and neglect cases. Whereas, young children of alcoholics exhibit symptoms of depression and anxiety to a greater extent than children of non-alcoholics. And whereas, young children of alcoholics often have difficulty in school and are more likely to be truant, drop out of school, repeat grades, or be referred to a school counselor or psychologist. And whereas, children of alcoholics with interest and support from family, friends, health professionals, teachers, clergy, and others can avoid the negative effects of alcoholism in their family. And whereas, the Troy Community Coalition and caring members of the community are committed to helping children of alcoholics. Now therefore be it resolved, the Troy City Council does hereby proclaim February 13th through the 19th, 2011, as Children of Alcoholics Week in the city of Troy, Michigan. And be it further resolved, that the city council calls upon all the citizens, community agencies, organizations, and businesses in Troy, to encourage all citizens of Troy to help break the silence often surrounding family alcoholism. And they reach out to support the children and their families. This is presented the 7th day of February 2011, signed by myself, all the members of council, and, thank you. And thank you for all the work you do for the community.
Thank you. Could I say just one?
Yes, certainly.
I know that's a lengthy agenda tonight, but the Troy Community Coalition has been around for 20 years, and our efforts are to promote wellness by promoting the, by not having substance abuse, alcohol and other drug abuse. And we would hope that our community joins with us in recognizing next week those children who are growing up in households where alcoholism is a problem, but also support all children in our community, because all of them are at risk in this day and age. And the Community Coalition stands ready to be your partner in any way that we can to prevent abuse of alcohol and other drugs in Troy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Now, this evening, we have some distinguished gentlemen with us who are serving not only Troy, but the greater community in the county. We have our Oakland County Clerk, Bill Bullard, Jr., and our county commissioners, Robert Goslin, Mike Bosnick, David Potts, and Gary McAlvery. So, if they would like to all come up to the mic. I know that Bill is being introduced in his new position as our new county clerk, but many of us already knew him when he was wearing his other hat, so you might want to explain that.
Mayor, it's good to be here as the new lineup for the county commission for the next two years. Of course, November, second was election, so that changed things a little bit. And of course, in two years, we'll have even district lines changing. So, not only the senate, the state house, the congressional, but also the county commission lines will be changing. But first of all, I want to introduce the county commissioners. We have Gary McAlvery in the back here. He represents the south and east portion of Troy, also Madison Heights. He was on Madison Heights City Council for 25 years, if you know. Any sliver of Royal Oak is what he represents also. On the south and west side, we have Dave Potts. Dave Potts is attorney, and he represents also Birmingham, Bloomfield, and parts of Bloomfield Township. The main portion of Troy is represented by our newest member, Mike Bosnick. He is a large part, and he is on the school board, I think, still there in Claussen, and he represents Claussen and that part of Troy stated. And then myself, I represent things, city north of 18 Mile, parts of Rochester Hills, and parts of Bloomfield Township. And we're just coming here to say hello, and issues that you may have for us, you can present them to us, we'll research them. A lot of people think the road commission is our purview, but it's not. We usually interface with the road commission and pass those things on to them. I also want a very special guest, like Bill Bullard, you mentioned earlier. Bill was appointed by the Circuit Court Judges to fill the vacancy of Ruth Johnson, who is now our Secretary of State. Bill is very capable. He's a state legislator, he's an attorney, he was also on senate, term limited there, and he came back to the county commission for, I think, eight years, and six of those years, he was the chairman. And then the Circuit Court Judges appointed him to fill the vacancy. So, he's a very capable person, very knowledgeable in his wisdom, and we're glad to have him. And I'd like to have Bill talk first. We aren't going to take too much time, we'll be quick, and, thank you.
Well, thank you, Robert. I'm pleased to be here, and I'm honored to have a distinguished and bipartisan group of county commissioners here to present me. I worked with them for many years in the county commission. We had a very exciting afternoon today because Rip Hamilton of the Detroit Pistons came in to get a passport for his son. So, I got to meet him and talk to him a little bit, and of course, he's been in the news lately, and I won't tell you what he told me, but after missing, I think, over 10 games he played Friday night, scored 15 points, and we'll see if he plays tomorrow night against the Spurs. But we're doing a lot of great things in the clerk's office. I'm not going to bore you with all the details. One thing I will tell you is, starting in the next month or two, we're going to really try to publicize our online services more. On the court side, you can get all sorts of court records online, in the vital record section, birth and death records. You can apply for a marriage license online, notary public applications. So, there are a lot of online services that the citizens aren't aware of, and our theme is going to be online, not in line, because every person that goes online, that's one less person in line in the courthouse. So, you'll be hearing more of that, and I'm looking forward to being in Troy and being your county clerk, register of deeds, for a couple of years and maybe beyond that. So, I'm pleased to be here. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. I'm pleased that you mentioned the county website, because I personally find it very helpful. There's a lot of good information there, too, not only for the clerk's office, but all the other departments. So, it's a well-developed site, and you keep adding more things in there, so it's a good communication tool. Thank you.
Just a point.
Mr. Potts?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. We hear so much bad news about what's going on in Oakland County and the surrounding communities, little good news. We have balanced budgets, as you may know, for the next three years, and we're supposed to have a real cataclysmic year in 2014, when some people forecast we may be as much as $50 to $80 million short of our budget. Now, the good news is that we, based upon some information, that property revenues, tax revenues, are actually coming a little higher than speculated. Maybe only short $23 million, which is dropping the bucket hardly anything. But the good news is that we may not be as far underwater as we thought, and maybe, just maybe, will be more good news if you come along. So, at least that could bring you something better than bad news. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, again, I thank you very much for the opportunity to address you this evening, council, mayor, and citizens of Troy. It's an honor to be elected to serve you as one of your county commissioners. It's an honor to be able to serve with distinguished public service, like Gary, Bob, and Dave, and look forward to working with you for the next two years to do what we can to help create a better community. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary?
Thanks, Madam Mayor, members of council. I just wanted to announce a couple of things. First of all, I serve on the Parks and Rec Board, and at our last meeting, we have committed to spending $854,000 for Catalpa Oaks Park, that's in Southfield, which is one of the few parks here at the south end of the county. Red Oaks, Catalpa Oaks, and then Lion Oaks. So, we're looking forward to having a restroom building, a concession stand, and a playground area over there by the end of the year. I also wanted to announce as well that the county is now hiring their seasonal help for this coming summer. Anyone 16 and above can apply by going to oakgov.com/jobs. Those are jobs that could be summer interns, lifeguards, program leaders in the Parks Recreation Area. But applications must be submitted no later than February 28th. It opens on the 14th and runs through the 28th. So, if any of your residents, college students, high school students over 16 want to apply for summer jobs, this is a great opportunity. They'll be hiring 450 people, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
This evening, we continue on with our agenda. There are no carryover items, but there is a public hearing, and that public hearing is the reprogramming of the Community Development Block Grant, which is CBDG funds for the program year of 2008 and the program year of 2009. Is Mr. Zerlag?
Cindy Stewart does this for us now.
Presenting that for us?
Yes.
Okay, Mrs. Stewart, would you? Okay, thank you.
Hi, mayor and city council. What we have put before you, Oakland County has suggested this for us, that the flood-drain improvements account for 2008 and 2009, that we move that into the Section 36, Milverton Park account, and in all the amounts that were stated.
Okay, thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone that is here to speak on this item of the reprogramming of the Community Development Block Grant? Seeing none, then we'll close the public hearing, return it to the council table for a resolution. Yes, Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Whereas, after conclusion of a public hearing on this date, February 7th, 2011, Troy City Council has determined that the program year 2008, unexpended funds in the amount of $84,811 shall be reprogrammed from flood-drain improvements to Section 36, Park Improvement Project Number 36-100-035, in the amount of $53,171.80, and to administration in the amount of $31,639.20. And whereas, after conclusion of a public hearing on this date, February 7th, 2011, Troy City Council has determined that program year 2009, unexpended funds of $115,072 shall be reprogrammed from flood-drain improvements to Section 36, Park Improvement Project Number 36-100-035, in the amount of $81,505, and to administration in the amount of $33,567. Therefore, be it resolved that the Section 36, Park Improvement Project Number 36-100-035 be added to the list of CDBG projects for 2008 and 2009.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem Kerwin, seconded by Councilwoman McGuinness, that we approve the resolution as printed and writ. Discussion, council members? Okay, the vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howrleck?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes. I move that we adjust the time limit for speakers under public comment to three minutes per speaker, due to the fact that we have more than 15 people that have signed up to speak, and so we adjust the time from the five minutes to the three minutes.
Support.
Moved by the chair, seconded by Mayor Protem Kerwin, discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Howrleck?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Motion passes. Again, I'll remind folks, if you've not been here previously, that these are, can be on items that are on the agenda or not on the agenda. Again, when we have the volume of speakers that we have, I think we have over 20, I will call five names at a time, and it just helps people move faster rather than waiting to come up. So, call the first five, and if you would line up in that order. If there's anyone that is here to speak that is not a Troy resident, would you please indicate that when you speak? A lot of the names I recognize, and they are Troy residents, so they, they're welcome to identify themselves as a Troy resident if they want, but we ask the others to identify themselves. So, these five people, please. Irv Wengrow, Paul Beck, Susan Martin, Sharon McDonald, Richard Peters. In that order, please. Thank you.
Good evening, all.
Good evening, Mr. Wengrow.
I'm up here tonight to really speak to the television audience of what they're going to hear tonight. A group called Troy Citizens United, along with Councilman Harlock, are going to present their plan to fund the library, implying that they are the true champions of the people's interest. So, let's look at the plan contained in their flyer and resolution. About three-quarters of the source money is a number you will hear a lot tonight, $1.7 million. And they both say it is tucked away under some accounting mattress that should be used for the library. Yet the real financial experts tell us that this money has already been allocated to cover the known shortfalls in revenues over the next several years, and will be needed for essential services, including police, fire, water, water emergencies, snow removal, et cetera. So, is now the councilman asking the council to pull back that 1.7 for a short-term library fix? That sounds to me like riverboat gambling, that somehow revenue will magically appear in the future to cover these more important needs. But whether the money has or has not been allocated yet is not the key point to me, that point being their irresponsible use of our tax money that potentially puts us all at risk just for their political gain. Spending this money for this purpose is like a family without a job, emptying their college fund for a long vacation, or a senior couple to use all of their retirement savings for a luxury cruise, hoping against hope that their funds will somehow be replenished. And this comes from a group that wants to sit on council next fall and manage our city. So, now that we know that the plan is smoke and mirrors, let's look at the motivation. To me, the real purpose of this flyer and resolution is nothing more than to make you believe that they have the answer, when in fact, they are the false messias, playing on our emotional connection to the library just for political advantage. So, I say respectfully to Councilman Harlock and to your supporters, shame on you for your subversive campaign to undermine the democratically approved budget before the ink was even dried. Shame on you for the sacrificed pawn of a petition drive that just interfered with any legitimate discussion to find realistic solutions. Shame on you for the misleading letter against Proposal 1, where you said that, quote, "The petition is vastly superior to the ballot questions," end quote. And with the facts we know now, we know this was an absurd statement. Shame on you for this new resolution that allows you to once again to refuse to accept any responsibility for the library problems by pointing your fingers at the others on the council. On all these, you rolled the dice, and the entire city lost, big time, while the sure thing was sitting right in front of you. And shame on you for putting a decent guy, Ed Kempin, through all the stress of a lawsuit. Because of your position on council, you should have known in advance that the lawsuit was inevitable.
Mr. Wengrow, I have to stop you. It was three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Our next person to speak is going to be Paul Beck.
Good evening, council. The information I'm about to give you came from the city of Troy, and I'd like to start off with, for budgeted for this year. In the police department, we got an increase of $464,000, almost $665,000, coming out of the capital fund. Another, another one was Parks and Rec. They got an increase of $3.8 million. Library and museum, they got a decrease of over $300,000. The Aqua Center, they got an increase of $321,000. Administration for the Water Fund expenditure, administration went up $900,000 over last year's budget. Water meter reading went up $30,000 from last year. The sewer fund administration went up $800,000. Maintenance went up $500,000. This, this is all coming from the city of Troy. The police department got a $2.3 million increase in their general fund spending. The library-museum from the general fund got a decrease of $1.5 million. And if you want to know where the money is going that we could put into the library, that's where it's going, to other departments. The other thing, too, is I'd like to bring up, is I'd like to know how many administrators in the city of Troy get more than $160,000 in salary. And I bring that up to signify that the governor of the state of Michigan makes $160,000. I'm willing to wager that there's more administrators in this city that get, make more money than the governor of the state of Michigan. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Susan Martin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Here is a concerned resident and commentator on the issues facing Troy today. I speak tonight to address both the resolution from Councilman Howrleck and the latest mailing from an anti-sustainability group in Troy. This group, comprised of members of Troy Citizens United, friends of the library with no new taxes, and their latest incarnation, Troy Unified for Fiscal Responsibility, has tried to tell us that there is in fact a rainy day fund in the budget that could be used to keep the library open. The problem with their proposed funding is they've apparently missed the detail in the three-year budget document on the website, where the use for these funds is explained. Per that document, quote, "The general fund budget is balanced by utilizing fund balance as a revenue source." What this means is that these fund balance dollars are used to shore up areas of the budget that are in financial jeopardy. Jeopardy spurred on by the perfect storm of a loss of revenue caused by having the lowest millage rate of a full-service city in Oakland County, combined with major decreases in our property values. Further, given that the city manager shared with council in November that he predicts a $700,000 shortfall of revenue in fiscal year 2011-12, and an additional projected loss of nearly $800,000 the following year, it's clear that the money they demand be spent is instead needed to cover these projected losses. In other words, this so-called rainy day fund isn't there because it's already raining. Unfortunately, because this anti-sustainability group is so vocal, it's often perceived that the rest of Troy are merely obedient sheep who follow in their wake. Further, by continuing to change their name and form new groups, it's giving the impression that residents who share their rhetoric are multiplying exponentially. I'm here to assure you that is not true. We're hearing the same flawed message from the same flawed thinkers. However, there are many other residents concerned by this continuous flow of disingenuous and misleading information. We're growing stronger each day to fight the idea that we can pay the lowest taxes around while retaining the stellar services we've always had. As per the ICMA report, we can no longer do more in Troy with far less. I implore anyone who'd like to be made more responsibly informed about the reality of our situation, to go to W- We're hearing the same flawed message from the same flawed thinkers. However, there are many other residents concerned by this continuous flow of disingenuous and misleading information. We're growing stronger each day to fight the idea that we can pay the lowest taxes around while retaining the stellar services we've always had. As per the ICMA report, we can no longer do more in Troy with far less. I implore anyone who'd like to be made more responsibly informed about the reality of our situation to go to www.kiptroystrong.blogspot.com to get some of the real information you need. Thank you.
And next we'll hear from Sharon McDonald.
Good evening. I worked very hard last year, as I've said a few too many times, to save our library with Proposal One, but our group failed. That's because a lot of the pro-library people here today were all of the anti-proposal people in November. And it's not really the library they're interested, it's about getting the library for free. And some people think that's a joke, but we've, our revenues are really down in Troy because of the recession and the money just isn't there. Now, while I appreciate Mr. Howellak producing the library plan, he claimed to be so superior to Proposal One, and it's, it was so quick, just three months after the election in November, but I'm afraid he was incorrect, that it isn't superior. I'd be thrilled if Councilman Howellak could pull a $1.7 million rabbit out of his hat tonight, but I've read his proposal for saving the library. I've read Troy Citizens United's proposal, and I know they won't work. I know in part because one of the key numbers in their plans is the $400,000 in pension savings from last year. But the funny thing is, I was at the meeting, the city council meeting where that 400K was announced, and at the same meeting, it was also announced that there was a $700,000 shortfall in revenues for the next fiscal year and the other 800,000 shortfall for the year after that. But all of these people were at that meeting, too. Is it a case of TCU Howellak dementia, or are these people simply cherry-picking numbers that forward their proposal and conveniently forget the numbers that prove them wrong? I think so. There is no undesignated $1.7 million. It's designated to the next two years' budgets. And I've been listening, paying attention, and doing my homework, and I know that Troy has a very low tax millage and that we have a cap on our millage, so it can't be raised unless we have one of those expensive elections, not even to save our library. The two cities with lower millage rates than ours, there are two, Orchard Lake and Bloomfield Hills, don't have library, don't have libraries, and soon we won't either. Because like those cities, we either can't afford one or we don't care enough to pay for one. Contrary to what TCU might tell you, our taxes are very low, lower than Royal Oak and Novi and Birmingham and Clarkston and lower than Madison Heights. Out of 19 cities, our taxes are 17th. We do not pay high taxes in Troy. Today I saw someone on TCU's Facebook say the city could give us all the services we want for half the taxes. So you see, the problem is, some people simply don't know what they're talking about. So you have to think about it for yourselves. What kind of city do we want? So Troy residents, I ask you, don't believe what these people tell you. Do your homework. Find out the truth. Thank you.
And Mr. Peters, before you start speaking, so you can get your full three minutes, move up, but don't start yet. I'm going to call the next five people. Gordon Shepke, Dan Brake, Kathy Everlov, Robin Ostergaard, and M.L. Geiger. Would those people come up next, please? Okay, Mr. Peters, you can start now.
Evening, mayor, council, folks of Troy.
We're going to adjust the mic for you. Move it up. There you go.
Okay. Thinking a little bit about the library, I think this is kind of an attack on the First Amendment. I believe that this is, there's a reason for the First Amendment in our constitution. And unlike the paid media, which you're going to hear from the rich and the powerful, the public library, or the, the public press, if you will, is a place where people can go and, and decide for themselves. It's not perfect, but I believe that this is a necessity that we should, we should, we should try at all, you know, at all options to keep open. And that is where I believe that we, we should try. Now, the funny may come from, maybe we could co-fund with the education community somehow, or maybe through the federal or the state, local, et cetera. But I do believe it's really imperative that we keep our library open. Also, one quick thing before I get off, we've all watched this week about Egypt and what's going on there, and I'd like to make a suggestion. Maybe the Secretary General of the United Nations could maybe mediate between the opposition parties there going there. It's up to them, of course, and also maybe he could mediate between Saudi Arabia and Iran and its neighbors, and also in Korea, if not. Thank you very much.
Mr. Shepke?
Thank you very much. My name is Gordon Shepke. I've lived here since April of 1970. I've been active in Troy quite a bit. It isn't whether we want a library or we don't want a library. It's a matter of, do we want a board running this, an expensive board running this library, or do we want the city to do their job and run it? And most of us, at least in the last two elections, have, came very, came through very loud and clear, we want our city to run it. I'm grateful for Martin's proposal. This council, I vigorously ask you to support Councilman Howellak's proposal, not blindly, study it. And it will keep Troy's library open if it's done correctly. His proposal clearly defines the need of funds, and there is no responsible reason, after the study is made, you crunch these numbers, to keep the fear and animosity and personal divisions that's our, that are going on in our community active. We need to be working together as citizens for the good of the community, and we got to stop all of this nonsense. Troy is going to have a library one way or another. Let's start working together as responsible citizens, keeping down any new burdensome tax increases on us and our corporate business partners, and put this library issue to bed on a positive way, and stop wasting money and city resources that have been, like they've been expended in the past by fighting with each other and cost these special elections and hiring consultants on where to find extra money. I think as a council, you have, you have a job to do to solve this issue. The money's there. It shouldn't be Plan A, Plan B. You have the power to tell the city manager, we have to allow, we have to do this or move that. And I think it's a shame that this has gone this long as a body you've set back. This should have not waited this long before this has been addressed. This should have been an ongoing discussion, and I, and I chastise you for that. And basically, we've got to get down to business, work together, because it's our, all of our futures at stake. It's not pro or con. We have to keep this city viable, but we have to do it within, with a reasonable budget. And the budgets that have been proposed so far have not been reasonable, and we do not, do not want a library board. We want our city, that people are more accountable to run, to run that library. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Dan Brake. Folks, folks, please. Thank you. Mr. Brake? No, we don't need that either. Just, we'll hear from everybody. We have 25 speakers.
I can't help but observe, there seems to be a new group present tonight called something like Close the Library on Schedule. We know there are 66 days left of library operations before the announced closing to the public at the end of April. 66 days goes pretty fast. So we suspect there's some other program waiting in the wings, but 66 days goes pretty fast. There's so much on your agenda tonight, I could use 30 minutes. I want to quickly talk about the Early Out program. Quite frankly, it seems to me the city manager has failed to present to you any kind of program for where he's taking the city workforce. And lacking that, how can you possibly consider spending $1.9 million of my property tax money in order to end up who knows where? Rehiring the same skills you just paid to leave? Paid an extra bonus to leave on top of a pension program that's already twice as generous as the private workforce that's paying the bill? I hope you'll challenge him on that. I want to come back to a report that the city manager presented you a couple of weeks ago. I hope you've distributed the copies, Mrs. Bartholomew. This is a report about the library's performance. It has data comparing our library to nine other local community libraries. I took the liberty of adding two columns on the very right. All I've done is convert our library's statistics for circulation and for annual visits to ratios by dividing the gross numbers by the budget. What this shows at a glance is, first of all, you can compare the various libraries that way very directly. The average for all of those libraries excluding our own is $5.13 per circulation, or $7.99 per annual visit. Our own library comes out at $1.74 per circulation statistic compared to the average of $5.13. Southfield Public Library is the highest at $12.31 per circulation statistic. On annual visits, our library comes out at $3.5 per visit, where the norm for the whole group is $7.99. The high number is $12.60. These are stellar statistics. Our library manager is doing an incredible job with diminishing resources each year, and two points come to mind. If there are other city departments that can use universal metrics for comparing their performance to other local governments, we'd sure like to see it. And my second point is, this is the gem of your fleet, and you've mugged the library's budget on the way to the budget-making table last spring. How dare you?
Before our next folks, please, it just takes up time. Before our next speaker starts, let me have, are you Kathy? You can come on up. We're going to have Robin Ostergaard, M.I. Geiger, John Hennessy, Gerald Stager, and James Savage. Please come up in that order if you're speaking. Thank you. Kathy, welcome.
Hi. I'm here as a resident and as a person who has a career in literacy. I think we're way beyond blame here. I don't think there's any point in getting up and tossing blame around, except Mr. Howellak. I do think that the letter that I received, that I think was part of the defeat of Proposal One, I think it was irresponsible. As a person who's not an expert on all this, it implied to me that I had no reason to vote for this, that we had plenty of money. I voted for it anyway, but I, I think that was an irresponsible thing to send out. I don't claim to understand the budget. It's way beyond me. I get a lot of different information, but I'm here to ask you to look ahead. I think a part of the reason we're in this problem is a failure to look ahead. We did a library project working in the parking lot to prepare the library for a drive-through drop-off, which would have been really nice had we had money. When it was announced in the paper, that project, it was the same day, same issue, same day that they announced that the library would be closing. It concerns me that as soon, as recently as the previous year's budget, we weren't aware that we didn't have enough money to keep the library open, so we approved a budget item to create a drive-through. I'd like to ask you to not make that same mistake. If there's any way to save the library, to look ahead. Closing the library is a very hard thing to undo. Once you lose staff, you redistribute the books to other places. It's a, it's a hard thing to come back from, so let's look ahead. It's also a hard thing to undo the reputation that we're destroying. When we come on the news as a city that didn't care enough to find a way to keep our library open, or didn't look ahead soon enough to find a way, didn't come up with any solutions, that's a pretty hard to undo, that, that reputation that we're destroying. So while, like I said, I don't understand the budget completely, but if there is any way that this library could be saved, it's important to me as a citizen, as an educator, as a taxpayer. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin Ostergaard? Robin Ostergaard? An individual signed up, but they're not here. Mr. Geiger? Are you Mr. Ostergaard?
I'll ask you.
Sir?
I'm Mr. Hennessy.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Geiger, you may go next.
Negative publicity about Troy seems to continue at an accelerated rate. There was the Hooters fiasco where Troy got a black eye and Hooters got some advertising. Then we had a general election where the millage was defeated, and that was followed by the Troy Special Library millage rejections. Then last week, disposal of this city hall was sensational news in the Detroit radio and metro newspaper. Troy has become the laughingstock of Detroit suburbs. Recognizing that Troy is financially distressed, possibly some capable, conscientious, community-minded individual or firm with public relations expertise can be prevailed upon to come forth as a volunteer to recommend action and proposals to aid the city management, the Troy officials, and to counter some of the free speech distortions that prevent, and to therefore prevent Troy from becoming further degraded. I can't believe the Troy leaders are going to allow a high-quality community to fail where we can again have, or still have, the opportunity for all residents to have quality lives. I believe we need to make this known to everyone, and especially everyone in southeastern Michigan.
Thank you, Mr. Geiger. John Hennessy is next.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Troy City Council people. My name is Jack Hennessy, and I live in the, for 32 years, in the Wendover Woods sub in western Big Beaver Adams area. I also worked for 22-plus years for DuPont down on Rankin and Stevenson. In a small way, that company is maybe illustrative of some of the things we're going through. At its height, DuPont occupied three of those four corners on Rankin and Stevenson, employed a close to 700 people. But they, like all, had business affect them and had to make very, very painful decisions. It's a great company. Been in business for 102 years or 202 years, and I believe continuously profitable. Very painful decisions. Comment was made about City Hall being sold or disposed of. There was a magnificent laboratory on the northwest corner of Rankin and Stevenson that's demolished. Couldn't be resold, it was a special-purpose building. So the point there was, in the private sector, some managers lost many, many nights of sleep dealing with cutbacks that were, I don't want to say Herculean or of the worst nature, but certainly people losing their jobs, starting slowly. Could be company cars, could be golf outings, whatever. But those decisions are made by good managers in tough times. That brings me to where, what I've listened to over the last couple of years, I've gotten a bit more active. Me and some of my neighbors became more active in the consideration of the special election a year ago, February. And the consensus of these people living near where I do was generally that, hey, these are tough times. We're at a near-record depression. Homies are lower than ever, and incomes are down. I personally lost a contracting job with DuPont, which I had out to retired, and lost a significant income stream. I understood the decision, didn't like it, but understood it. People looking, big tax increase, and I know you can, many numbers tonight here are coming, being assailable, unassailable, but one reading was of a 29% increase in the operating millage, not the total millage. But the mindset of people was, look, the city of Troy has to learn to do more with less, as many in the private sector, private business, public corporations, both big and small. That millage was voted down by about two to one. 14,000 or 14,500 people, I believe, voted against it. The next resurrection was the millage in November, to which was attached the library. At that point, essentially putting the library hostage for essentially the same amount of money. And by the way, the library has now operated on considerably less money than it did several years ago, and that should be the benchmark, not what it was in the great days. That was voted down, albeit by a small margin, but still voted down by 15,000 people. All I'd ask, and I have about 10 more seconds, is that we've heard numbers, assailable, unassailable. There have to be enough smart people to get to the bottom of them and understand what's real, what might be confounded, and separate it out. Because many people think that regardless of what our property tax millage is, there's enough revenue in this city from both all tax streams, all fee streams... enough revenue in this city from both all tax streams, all fee streams, to fund a library that the city runs and operates. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Gerald Stager. Gerard.
Madam, you've missed, Madam Mayor. My name is Gerard Stager.
I'm sorry.
Okay. I'd like to give a handout to City Clerk Bartholomew, if I can.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. I put around a handout discussing the funding of the city budget from the CFR, from the year ended, June 30th, 2010. And our budget, I've got attached for the year ending, this upcoming June 30th, 2011, and a flyer that's been mailed around to show that there's additional funding the city had not anticipated, that would cover funding the library for another year, and gives us a chance to talk about further savings for the City of Troy that have not been discussed and were not discussed in the ICMA report, so far anyway, that has come out. You'll see at the bottom of page Roman numeral 10 of the comprehensive annual financial report that there is an unassigned balance of $10,722,000, and that would represent 18.5% of the general fund budget. Of course, as you recall, council in the fall of 2009 set a 15% target, and if that target had been met, you would have had not $10,722,000, but $8,694,000. It is coming at more than $2 million, that amount. That would be not an extra $1.7 million, but even better than that, an extra $2.0 million. As you're aware, also, the actuarial report on the defined benefit plan came out, I believe it was late November, and the next contribution is 400,000, more than 400,000, less than anticipated. The city library budget is 2.3 million. If it closes, there's been close to 200,000 budgeted to keep it open. You need about 2.1 million to keep it open. The City of Troy is fortunate that they have more than enough money to keep it open. You'll hear from people who have been in favor of tax increases, against tax increases. There's broad agreement, you should keep it open. There are opportunities to discuss for saving the city money in the future, but the important thing tonight is to keep the library open. We'll have some new members of council elected in November. No one who wants to close the library will be elected or reelected to council. It's pretty clear that would be the case. If you shut it down, it'll be open right back up. It doesn't make any sense. There's money to keep the library going. We should keep it open. Troy is fortunate to be able to spend a high amount of money per capita, more than many other communities in the area. We are more than able to support a library despite our difficult times. I ask you, members of council, to please reconsider the budget. Please be reasonable, and please help keep Troy the good city that it is. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from, next we'll hear from Mr. Savage. But before you start, Mr. Savage, I'll call the next five people. Ann Kaminsky, Julie Sigler, Rita Ray Katrib, Neil Ujansky. Yes, Mr. Savage. Go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of city council. I'm not going to talk about the library. What I'm going to talk about was an item, Troy Times, January 27th, 2011. And it's regarding zoning. It's a lengthy article, so I'll just talk about the bits I'm concerned with. As well, regarding the planning department, and it says, "To plans for economies, et cetera, and allow city staff rather than city council to approve final plans. The proposed ordinance would also allow planning commission rather than the council to approve planned unit developments, which would allow developers more density." My question is, is this what Troy residents want? More density? I don't think so. And do Troy residents want zoning decisions to be made by staff with no council oversight? I don't think so. Over the years, I have seen dozens of rezoning applications opposed by neighborhood residents. In many cases, council has been very apologetic, but sided with the management and approved the rezoning anyhow. How often have we heard from council, "We do understand your feelings, and we are sympathetic." But then, there were times when council agreed with the residents and denied the application. Let me remind you of a case a few years ago, that without council oversight and vigilance on the part of one resident would have ended in disaster for her Troy homeowner. Hidden in the consent agenda to be approved in a package with the usual run-of-the-mill stuff was a resolution to condemn a property on Lavenoy's. The homeowner stated that she had never, at any time, been approached by any city official regarding the sale of her property. She had previously refused to sell to a private developer who had offers to purchase nearby properties for an office building. Now, the management quickly withdrew the item from the agenda, but nevertheless, all of the council were enraged, and Councilman Tony Paletta blasted management for their devious machinations. And I think that's the right word, although it may not be the exact words that Mr. Paletta uttered, but nevertheless, I think they fit. The council apologized profusely to the homeowner, but no one was held accountable, no one was fired, not even a sentier. The message I read here, I mean, one sentence. The message I read here is that the planning department does not trust council members to make the right decisions. And I hope that when it comes up, council will make the right decision. Thank you.
Ann Kaminsky.
First of all, thank you for the proclamation. I should have said that earlier. My name is Ann Kaminsky. I've lived here since 1975, and I am currently the executive director of the Troy Community Coalition. I wanted to talk about three events that we have coming up in the next few months. I'm not here to talk about the library or anything like that, but something good going on in our city that we hope that you will participate in. The first is our monthly meeting in March, which is March 3rd, will be held at the Troy Community Center, because we are recognizing over 100 incredible kids. They've been nominated by friends, families, neighbors, relatives for small acts of kindness they did with great love. Nothing that would make them superstars in anybody else's world but their own, but we want to make sure that they're recognized and let them know the community values their kindness and their good deeds. We started this 10 years ago, recognizing 14 young people. It's over 120 that we'll be recognizing March 3rd at the Community Center, 6:30. Please join us if you choose to. The second thing is that one of the benefits that the coalition has been able to provide to the community for the past five years is a free smoking cessation class. If you know of someone in your life that would like to quit smoking but can't afford to go to some of the classes, they'd like a support system to do that, we are holding free smoking cessation class, starting in April, at Beaumont Hospital. The person who puts on this class is Dr. Harold Weaver, who is a former surgeon in Detroit, and has great success rates at helping people change their lives and quit smoking. So, if there's someone in your life who you'd like to see quit smoking, or you yourself would like to quit smoking in the audience, contact the coalition, and we'd be happy to sign you up. It's free, and it only comes around once a year. Lastly, in May, we have, for 16 years, celebrated our Faith Community Prayer Breakfast. The coalition is involved in this activity because, first of all, we'd like to celebrate the rich diversity of our faith community in Troy, and we know that people who have a rich faith life are much less likely to engage in risky behaviors. And so, the Troy Coalition has put on this Faith Community Prayer Breakfast for every year for 16 years at St. Nicholas Church. It's early in the morning, 7:30. If you would like to participate, either by purchasing an individual ticket or by being a sponsor of some sort, please feel free to contact the coalition office. We'd love to have you join us this year to celebrate some good things that are happening in Troy. The phone number for the coalition is 823-5088. Feel free to call us or go to our website at www.troycoalition.com. Thank you, members of council and the audience, for listening.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Julie Sigler.
Thank you. And most of all, I'd like to thank all of you for your care and consideration of our city at a very tough time, and as it gets tougher. I would like you also to know that there are those of us in Troy who would welcome having an elected voluntary library board, just as the expectation is that elected voluntary school board members are necessary to run the school system. I think that the library board would offer an extra edge, and I would very much understand why city management, the city council, would not be trained to run a library or to manage a library. So, I, for one, am not scared by the idea of having a separate library board, and I'm sorry to hear that some people are. My second point is totally off the subject. I have a neighbor who is not U.S.-born. After the snow last week, my husband and son dug her out of the street at the foot of her driveway. This morning, today, I find out that another neighbor dug her out at the foot of her driveway. She still doesn't know how to drive in snow. So, my suggestion is that we offer somehow, through the newsletter, somehow, some instructions on how to drive in snow for those people in Troy who are having to do it more often than they used to. Thank you very much.
Next, we'll hear from Rita Ray Katrib.
Hello.
Good evening.
I've been a citizen of Troy for the past 13 years, and through my middle school and high school years, the Troy Public Library has been a big asset to my education. And I feel that if you close it, you'll be hindering the growth of Troy, because I believe people move to Troy for assets, for resources, and the Troy Public Library is a big asset. Also, everyone has been talking about Proposal One, that was on the November ballot, but no one has talked that there were actually four proposals on the ballot. And maybe the solution is not just having one proposal, but like a combination of them. Because if you looked at the statistics online from the City of Troy, the highest-rated passage of proposal passing was the tax. But the other three proposals did have about a 15% to 20% yes rate. So, maybe if you did a combination of them, like increase fines for the library, or maybe like a membership once a year. Because there are other libraries that have membership dues, and if you did close the public library, we would have to go to a different library in a different city and pay their outside dues, which would probably range from $50 to $100. So, maybe it's better just to, like, increase the fines and have, like, a membership due, like, once a year, like $20, $30. It might not seem a lot, but it could make an impact. Thank you.
Before our next speaker, I'm going to call the next five people, so would you come up behind Neil? Christine Hill, Janice Daniels, Linda Kima, Thomas Burke. Yes, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council and dignified staff, city clerk's office in particular, who I've gotten to know very well over the time that I've worked the elections. I'm here today to support the library. I'm really disappointed that we've reached a point where we are having to urge our government to save the library, and I don't mean that disrespectfully, but I think that we've come to a point where people think they're going to get something for nothing. And I don't know how people can expect to pay less and less taxes and to receive adequate city services. And again, I'd like to thank the crew, who I think did a good job clearing the city streets of snow. Wasn't perfect, but given the resources, they did a good job. I was really surprised to hear that people think that the library board would be highly paid. They are volunteers, so I'm not sure if people are not well-informed on the nature of some of the proposals. But I do urge the city council to do everything in their power to save the library. I both live and work in Troy, and it's been an important resource, not just for my family, but for my job as well, where they have actually an excellent supply of technical books. So, I would just like to, in closing, say that, since we are, it seems to be almost an agreement that we need a library in the city, not just, and I should just say, not just a library, because we have a beautiful library in our city. We shouldn't be operating some little building with a portion of the books and calling it a library, when we have the Troy library that we need to preserve and strengthen, because I do think that having informed citizens is a bedrock of democracy. So, in closing, I'd just like to say that, so far, my daughter Ariela, who's in fourth grade, has managed to gather 13 signatures for her petition to save the library, so I do hope to bring that back. I forgot it. With many, many more, and I think that if we surveyed all the children who go to the City of Troy, I think it would be 100% they would be saved for saving the library. So, again, I want to thank you all for listening today, both at home and in the chamber. Thank you.
Christine Hill, next. Christine Hill.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm taking notice of many things around town lately. I saw a sign in front of a building on Waddles. It's there still today. Are you the fountain, or are you the drain? Great question in the current environment. I've been a homeowner here in Troy for 21 years, and in that time, the city has been the fountain, providing an award-winning set of services and a forward-looking city administration. Then, there are citizen groups who have taken on the role of the drain, belittling the city administration and council, sniping, demanding, and setting up roadblocks. Our city leaders saw the declining tax revenues coming way ahead of time, and devised constructive plans to meet the challenge. Senator John Papa George stood at this very podium and applauded that effort. Then, sadly, a hoped-for millage increase was defeated last February, one which would have avoided many of the cuts that have been necessitated since. I've done a lot of fact-finding during these last couple of years, and have come, more than ever, to trust the city's fiscal leadership and difficult decision. During last week's snowstorm, when many people were staying home from work, I noticed that our first responders and street crews showed up for duty as always, working hard, as usual, to keep our streets and citizens safe. Police officers were clearing accidents and stuck drivers, keeping the roadways passable and safe for the rest of us. The snowplows and the salt trucks were a very welcome sight. I'm grateful that these types of crucial city services are being maintained. We know that property values on which city taxes are based are declining. It's basic math. Lower taxable values, decreasing revenues, the city's checkbook is running low. Our gorgeous nature center and museum facility are gasping for life, and our nationally-recognized library is about to close. But we all knew that cutbacks and closures would be the result of failed millage attempts. So, here we are. We know that 60 full-time and dozens of part-time city employees were laid off this past June, a trend which is slated to continue this fiscal year and next. Another thing I've noticed, somebody else earlier mentioned the Keep Troy Strong blog spot. Lots of valuable information there, and what a great challenge, Keep Troy Strong. Citizens, tune up your civic responsibility. Please take a look, do some homework, and it will be easy to see where we're headed. Think about the implications for your family, your neighborhood, your property value, your safety, your quality of life. What about citizens' civility? Let's take a good look at this thing. Quit bickering, quit whining, quit setting up the roadblocks. We have a city government that's transparent, open, and available to all of us. Let's trust those civic leaders who have demonstrated that they deserve our respect and our thanks. Let's not tear apart what makes Troy wonderful, well-maintained, and forward-thinking, so that we can realize a viable future. Thank you.
Thank you. Janice Daniels is our next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor, council.
Good evening.
Management, staff. My name is Janice Daniels, and quite frankly, I'm proud to live in Troy. I think it's a wonderful city. I think it's on a cutting edge of fiscal responsibility. At least, that's what I'm hoping we can have. Actually, I am also proud to be a member of Troy Citizens United. This is a group of dedicated citizens who are well-educated, and they are very This is a group of dedicated citizens who are well-educated, and they are very conscientious and looking for government to be reined in instead of using the old get the taxpayers' money to solve all the problems kind of a solution. So I'm proud of Troy and I'm proud of Troy Citizens United. I'm also proud of our councilman, Horlak. Basically, I would like to read his resolution so that the listening audience knows what we're all talking about. He said, "Whereas the City of Troy has an additional $1.7 million in unallocated fund reserves resulting from the 2009-2010 fiscal year's financial performance, and whereas the City of Troy's employee retirement system realized an investment gain of $14.7 million for the year ending December 31, 2009, that is being amortized and will save the City of Troy significant contributions going forward, and whereas the City of Troy's employees' retirement system realized significant investment gains for the year ending December 31, 2010, that will be amortized and will save the City of Troy significant contribution requirements going forward, and whereas the City of Troy is aiming for, excuse me, achieving 10% to 15% labor and benefit cost savings across all employee groups, and whereas the City of Troy has operated a free public library for the benefit of all for over 40 years, and there is a great need in the community for continuation of these services, therefore be it resolved that the city manager is hereby directed to draft an amended and revised multi-year budget that incorporates these cost savings and uses these funding sources to provide for and fund the Troy Public Library, and be it further resolved that this amended multi-year budget be brought back to the city council no later than February 21, 2010." I think that's a wonderful plan that's been brought on by a very wonderful councilman. And Councilman Slater, what is your plan? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Linda Kyma.
Good evening, Mayor, council. In December, I came to council and spoke of my holiday wish, that being one of civility, understanding, due diligence, and working as a team. Well, so much for that wish. I should have known not to expect that from Troy Citizens United. They're on a mission, one of total control and power, not one of concern for our city. I wonder how many of them have been in the library recently. So citizens, if you think things are bad in Troy currently, all I can say is buy or beware. Beware of what you're being sold. Do your homework and get your facts from the appropriate resources. With that in mind, let the games begin. In one corner, we have TCU continuing to publish misrepresentations to the citizens of this fine community, not telling them what to expect if any of their ideas come to fruition. In the other corner, we have citizens of Troy who want nothing but the truth to be told to its fellow citizens in this fine community, the same citizens who came up with a viable option to save the library. Back to the other corner, Ed Kempen and his deceptive petition to have a library with no new taxes. This is akin to the sham he pushed on the citizens when he circulated his petition in 2008 to amend our city charter. He circulated it as enabling a tax cut when, in essence, it was a noose around the city's neck. It prohibits the city council from raising the millage rate without a vote of the public. Now, I know a lot of people think, what's wrong with that? Well, for starters, Troy's always had the option to raise or lower the taxes within a certain criteria, as deemed necessary by economic conditions. In fact, Troy had lowered the tax rate over a dozen times. This bit of leverage helped maintain our AAA bond rating. And Ed, when you say you're representing the will of the citizens and residents of Troy, I beg to differ. You represent only those that have bought into your vicious display of smoke and mirrors. If the citizens of this city bothered to read the ICMA report, they'd recognize how bare bones and how lean this city has been for all these years. It still amazes me that the likes of TCU can spout the rhetoric about taxes and so forth and not acknowledge what's been done. Again, the smoke and mirrors so that they can look like heroes when, in reality, it's their group that's managed to wreak this havoc on the city with misinformation. Can you imagine where this city will be if they're elected to council? This has to be stopped. One of the departments that is going to be unsustainable is that which will attract and keep businesses in Troy. If they're unsustainable, how will our 30% to 40% vacancy rate go down? Thank you.
Next, before Mr. Burke speaks, come on up to the mic, but don't start yet. We'll start the clock when you start. I'm going to call the next five people. Deb Debacker, your wife, Rosemary Tenetti, Ed Kempen, Bill Cowger, and Ellen Huderek. Those people, please come up. Thank you. Mr. Burke, good evening.
Perhaps I'd just, thank you. Perhaps I'd just like to say, at council's response to public comments, Councilman Slater, I look forward to your comments chastising the members of the pro-tax group for their very personal, continued vindictive attacks as you have in the past. Please continue chastising them. Thank you. I'd just like to focus a little bit, you know, people cut around on what are the facts or so. So we had our Oakland County Commissioners here this evening. I think it was Commissioner Potts said Oakland County has balanced its budget for the three-year period without a tax increase and without eliminating any departments. Then he said, "Looks like the bad news for the future isn't going to be as bad as was anticipated. Revenues aren't going to go down as much." Did the audience catch that when you thought of your prepared remarks? He said the $80 million deficit was going to shrink to $23 million. That's 70% of the shortfall disappearing. Maybe we should consider that before we take drastic action. And recall, when the current economic crisis started, it wasn't council initiative. I remember Robert Daddell of Oakland County coming here and explaining what the five-year projections are. That's what we based all this information on. Now that's turning out not to be the case, or perhaps not the case, and we should consider that before we do something drastic like close the library. Councilman Horlak has a resolution that makes reference to some things. You know, it alludes to a 2010 pension valuation. That won't be ready for many months, but it's obvious, knock on wood, because of the great market in 2010, there will be a considerable reduction in city expenses because of the improved investment gains. Let's not ignore that, even though the actuary valuation's not yet in. Lastly, the ICMA report on page six talks about merging some of the top 20 highest-paid positions in the city that were pointed out by TCU and others numerous times over the last several months, ignored by council, but now ICMA is even acknowledging that. And without mentioning the positions and the people, because I don't want to make this personal, I've not mentioned names in the past, but those two positions, per Mr. Zurelek's September 13 report, one is paid a salary of $129,000 with $86,000 of benefits. The other is $109,000 with $80,000 of benefits. Let me repeat that. We pay somebody $86,000 of benefits, and somebody claimed we don't have Cadillac benefits? I agree. That's not Cadillac benefits. Them's two Cadillac benefits. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Deb Debacker.
Mayor and council, I'd just like to say that I'm here in support of the resolution to open the budget and rebudget for the library. We all know that many people have come here with ideas and dollars to be able to do that. So please don't table it, and please don't vote no, despite your friends over here that want to close the library. And I'm really tired of the tax on Troy Citizens United. It's composed of individual professionals in finance, accounting, labor relations, and other quality fields that have had and gone through troubles in their own companies and with their own clients, and they have nothing but positive things to say to you, and yet they're constantly demeaned by some of you and other people in this audience. There, and yet, they are holding their heads up high and not attacking. I think I want to make some, maybe some simple ideas for people to understand. One of the biggest things we could, is last year, we didn't spend all the money we had budgeted. And that's what people are talking about here, the $1.7 million. So what the auditors do is they saw that you didn't, and that money is returned to fund balance or your savings account. So now, we have some extra money that we had and planned for, so we can use that $1.7 million to keep our library open. We also have less money to spend. We have, because the stock market got better, we can now spend less money on contributing towards a pension plan. $400,000 this year, $900,000 next year, $1.3 million in 2014, $1.8 million. That's what your actuary is telling you. So now, you have the money to keep the library open, and I think it would be great for you to pass this resolution, make everybody happy, and you'll be all done. And it'll just be a great day if you all vote yes. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Rosemary Tenetti. Is that right? And folks, please, I'm asking you again, hold your applause. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to express gratitude to all of you for your service to our city and appreciate what you're doing and the time that you put into it. I'd also like to put in a plug for the strategy of compromise. I worked pretty diligently to try to pass the millage, and I was one of the many who were heartbroken that it didn't pass. But as I've listened to commentary tonight and over the last few weeks and months, it seems like we've got two extremes that we're in danger of hardening into those positions. And on the one hand, you know, people that no new taxes under any circumstances, no matter what, even if it means that our library closes. On the other hand, no changes or reconsideration of our budget, even if it means that, you know, we do have to go ahead and close the library. Someplace in there is room for compromise, and I just urge all of you to look for the common ground and to find a way to keep this wonderful institution of our library open in Troy, even if it means some tax increase. I think I can informally speak for thousands of Troy residents who would be willing to pay some extra tax in order to save our library. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Ellen Huderek. Oh, wait, no, Ellen, you're out of, I'm sorry. Next, we're going to hear from, I'm sorry, Ed Kempen, then Bill Cowger, then Ellen Huderek, and then somebody just signed up, Laura Charvinkap? I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. Kempen?
Okay. Well, the lawsuit's over. I'm thankful for that. It was a hard-fought battle, many sleepless nights thinking about all of the little innuendos of the whole entire state of Michigan's legal system and how all these, it was a very good learning experience for me. I think I read every section of the charter, turned every section of ordinances around, including those pertaining to our library. It was quite challenging, and it was well-fought by both sides. I was surprised by the initial filing against me. That was a real big shock. You know, the battle ensued, and both sides, I think, fought well. Ultimately, I think the judge could have decided with either party. I think Laura did a good job on her side, making her points. And I'm a little bit disappointed, but the petition is gone, and I just wanted to share that with everybody. But what does live on is all of the will of the people behind this petition and the positive response, really from the community, that the efforts that we had put forward to make sure that our library is maintained. Ultimately, it's a decision of whether it's going to be, I think, paid for by the taxpayers or paid for by the taxpayers. It's not, seems kind of odd to me, but really, that's what it is. We all want our library, I think, that, I don't think there's, is there anybody here that didn't want a library?
Mr. Kempen?
Okay. So I just want you to be aware of the will of the people here and make a decision that is right in managing this city. I understand you've had difficult times in the last year or two with the budget considerations, but I think that this is something worth protecting and saving for our city, and that's all I have to say. Oh, with the exception of, right now, Martin also has a proposal on the table to look at that budget and do it in a positive and different, maybe not quite as confrontational way as this petition was, and I hope that you'll consider it fully. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Bill Cowger. Bill Cowger?
Yes, my name is Bill Cowger. I've been in Troy now 32 years, going on 33. My children have gotten a wonderful education here. It was a great place to raise kids. Trying to find a way to soften the tone and to improve the dialogue in the community. And today, I joined, I don't speak for them, but I joined an organization called Troy Residents, Unified for a Strong Troy. The intent is to improve the dialogue, to have a centrist-based organization that looks at both sides, that is non-partisan and is tri-partisan, if you want to call it that to the extent that I can tell. The bottom line is, we all understand that the revenues for the city have gone down. Services are going to be cut. When you're talking 140...